All right, we'll start the meeting, six thirty. All right, any need for executive session tonight?
Recording in progress.
I did have one item, management. We have a motion to go into executive?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any need to amend the agenda?
Just, um, uh, I didn't know if you wanted to review the mosquito, there's a mosquito person that was supposed to be like a permanent representative of Pittsburgh. That's on like a regular person and because they they're down a person, they wanted to know if you wanted to appoint somebody.
Oh, okay.
So that that topic and then, um, Mr. Van Huesen's attendance here to discuss.
Yeah, I'm just guessing.
Motion to accept agenda as amended. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can't spell and say aye at the same time, there we go. Um, all right, anything on the, uh, meeting minutes of May eighteenth? I didn't see anything.
We sign them.
Yeah.
Sign them. No, signed and passed, oh, that's right.
You won't because you're there.
I got them standing, yeah.
Yeah, you probably shouldn't sign them.
No, probably not.
And any questions on the orders?
I noticed the, uh, water hydraulic study, there's two different, uh, counts here seventeen eighty and fifty-one twenty-one, uh, what, uh, is that? Waste water or are they? They're drinking water? Otter Creek Engineering, what?
Yeah, I think they're two different things.
So you're saying the seventeen forty-one seventy?
Is that what you're talking about?
Well, that's one of them and then the other one's fifty-one hundred and twenty-one dollars right under it. It both are, pretty much the same, but it looks.
So.
Is that from the culverts?
There was a previous balance.
Could've been a culvert.
It has to be.
That's another outfit.
Was that the one by Dougie's?
Yeah, yeah, but that's that's not if Burlington doing that one, right?
I don't know.
You know, there was a couple of different, um, batches here, so, just please bear with me one minute.
They're also doing the relocation of lines under the road for Route seven, that company's doing that too, correct?
Yeah, that that might be Otter Creek, isn't the outfit in Burlington Brenda, that's the one doing the culvert, right?
Yeah, they're the ones that are doing, supposed to be doing West Creek.
Yeah, we had, have we had a bill from them?
No. Oh, I've, I hope not.
This has gotta be the.
Wouldn't be related to that culvert they're going to put in by the Devonport place.
That could be.
West Creek Road.
I, I don't.
No, that's a, that's an outfit out of Burlington doing that.
Deal. It may be something that I've just kind of forgotten about.
I wonder if it isn't part of Route seven project?
Well.
Cause that's who's been working on that.
That's a very good possibility.
Yeah, cause that has to do, could be to do with the water and the bridge too, relocation of that stuff.
Yeah.
That's, that's them too, I think.
Yeah, I, well.
Yeah.
Logic would say that it was, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you wanna circle back around some?
Yeah, let's just.
I'll fi- I'll keep looking while you.
I was about critical.
Anybody else have any other questions? Hi. All right, town managers report?
It's rather, um, brief, I'm still working on, I spent a great deal of time trying to still, uh, gather all the information I need to move forward with the West Creek culvert project.
Okay.
Um, I've made a little bit of progress with it, um, I do at least have the final drawing on the plans, um, with the site elevations and all that intact, but I'm still working on some other pieces, so I really can't put it out to bid yet, um, and I'm actually getting a little worried, t- timeline wise. Um, because I have to have that project completed by October first.
They did get back to you though?
They got back to me with a drawing, but, um, evidently the permits were supposed to be pulled by them, that was an arrangement that was made, um, prior.
Okay.
And that has not happened.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's concerning.
It is very concerning, um, so, um, as I stated, I, I mean, I, I've, I'm do- I'm reaching out every day, I'm emailing or trying to reach people to get information on, uh, getting what we need so that I can put the bid out, cause I have the bid drafted.
Yep.
For the most part, I just need some of these other components, um, so I'm ready to, you know, put it out there, I just need to know that we have the permitting.
Okay.
So I think, um, I may reach out to the state as well tomorrow, I was hoping to hear more from the company, the engineering firm today, but I didn't.
Okay.
So tomorrow I am probably gonna reach out to the state as well, cause I need to have a couple of discussions.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, um, so the, then the other, the other good thing though that's happened so far is we, we settled on a, to change the subject, cause I can't really say much more about that one at this point.
Yep.
Um, so we have a location for the, um, Pittsburgh Day that was voted on, uh, in the, uh, recent weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it's gonna be at the park.
Right.
At the recreation park, recreation park.
Yeah.
Um, so that was good, um, I also, um, uh, attended the, as you did, the TAC meeting.
Mm-hmm.
To talk, to hear about what's going on with, uh, Route seven.
Yep.
And the progress.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, I don't know if you wanted to share that or you want me to share that, or?
You're welcome to, I didn't bring my notes, I wasn't.
Well, I mean, pretty much where it is now is that the TAC committee is gonna draft.
Don't we have it on the agenda so we can re- talk about it then?
Yeah, we do, yeah, okay, so I'll skip that, um. Just pretty much, I'm ca- I'm just pretty much getting up to speed, I've had a lot of, uh, different folks in town coming in to see me with various issues.
Mm-hmm.
One was water, um, water being supplied that has sediment in it, um, uh, it's been an ongoing issue, um. I, I asked that particular family to please forward me some of the photos and different documentation that they might have, so that I have something in writing and that I can present to you folks.
Okay.
Um, so they're gonna do that, um, he, he showed me some information while he was in my office, but I, it's better if I just have everything together, like in a, some sort of a packet to present you with that. Um, so I ha- went to discussion with that, I've had, um, several discussions throughout the week, um, concerning a few areas of blight. Um, neighbors complaining about some blight issues in, in a few different areas in town. Um, I did have the police chief take a ride out because one of them was stating that there was no running water and it could be a health concern and that, uh, many trailers were being stored on this property and, so I wanted to at least confirm whether or not that was true, uh, and, um, I don't believe there were as many trailers on the property as was stated, so the, the person complaining said there were five and there was actually two.
Okay.
Um, so there was just a lot of this sort of activity this week, just very kind of random.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then last week, um, I, I did spend most of my time, you know, working on trying to get this culvert.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's just a lot of back and forth and, and reading and for me, uh, and getting up to speed with what notes are already in place.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, well then, as we, uh, move into select board member remarks, I just wanna first say congratulations and welcome to our new select board member, Mark Winslow.
Thanks for having me.
Um, I had a couple of things, I did, I did, um, attend, uh, a Zoom, the, one of the VLCT kinda training seminars, whatever, on regulating cannabis. So, and I just had a couple, I took a few notes, um, I don't know, there, the licensing for cultivation is open, retail is in September, October, but the pre-qualification closes, um, the oh, it closed two days ago, so those notes are all, are already not. So, but I guess anybody, if anybody was looking to pre-qualify for that, they would've probably had that. Um, and then the town opt-in, they, um, the cannabis control board would like us to send a copy of the results and the contact info of the town clerk, and I have that information, I can either give to you Brenda or, or to Helen, um, and then, as we have already kind of discussed whether to, um, have our own board, it's, it's not a requirement, but we may. Um, and then there is no zoning designation for cannabis, um, and then cannabis is considered farming only under certain conditions on, if it's already an established farm for tax purposes. Those are just some of the notes that I had taken for interest, and then, um, uh, there, there was a, uh, pretty lengthy, um, on the Pittsburgh community Facebook page about speeding issues in town. So I, I said that I would bring that and, uh, put it, have it put on the agenda for next meeting, cause there are people who'd like to attend about speeding issues on their streets.
Okay.
And that's all I had, anybody else have anything?
I actually had a re- police report too, I brought with me in here, I didn't, you know, I, I didn't know if it's something you'd like me to update you on, like on a monthly basis, because I spoke with the chief and asked if he could please give me some statistics, uh, because I have been getting calls as well about speeding.
Yep.
So I don't know, I kinda just grabbed it and brought it with me, but I didn't know if it's something that you guys wanna see when I get it, if you'd like me to include it in your packets.
Something that would go in our packet would be great.
You wanna see it too? Okay.
Yeah.
I'll do that then.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Um, okay, so, um, after the last meeting, I think it was Tom and Alicia and I walked out, and of course the plants are gone now, but all these plants have died out here. So it was mentioned that maybe we should try some raised beds, um, and I got thinking about that, we've got a bunch of granite curving sitting down at the transfer station. And I've talked with a friend of mine who does that, a couple hundred bucks for a diamond blade, we'll cut it, and maybe that's something we could get the town crew to do, put some granite curving for raised beds.
That would be nice.
And try to put some plants there, and maybe if we get them up high enough, the salt won't kill them.
Yeah, that's, that would be nice.
So just something to think about.
It's a good idea.
It'll go in good with everything else we've got here.
Yeah, we have one.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause everything looks so beautiful in the centerpiece where the memorial is, and that would be nice.
Yeah, that would.
And there's a bunch of it there.
Okay.
So.
Just as well utilize it.
Oh, yes, just sitting there, it's been there for years, so, yeah.
Well, good, thank you, that's a good idea.
So. I think that's all I had.
Anybody else? All right, now public comment.
So, uh, my name's John Van Huesen, I work at the, uh, Addison County Regional Planting Commission, um, so we're equivalent north of, uh, Re- uh, Rutland Regional Planting Commission. And we are the Clean Water Service Provider for Otter Creek Basin, so, you know, day and the all the way, you know, up into the, into Lake Champlain, out of Ferrisburg, Pantin area. There's a lot of money that will be available to folks who are interested in developing projects, uh, related to water quality, so this falls under Act seventy-six, water quality improvement for Lake Champlain. Um, and when I say there's money, there's a lot of money, there's like millions of dollars for each of the various spaces, um, and so we're acting as the Clean Water Service Provider, and all that means is that we get to disperse the funds, um, and there's a Basin Water Quality Council, uh, that will review these projects, prioritize which ones will have the, the most impact, produce the most, or sorry, reduce the most phosphorus input into the lake, um, and then they will get funded, um, and it's not as though other projects won't, it's just as they get prioritized, money will go to those that get sort of a higher ranking. Um, so we, the RPC, won't be doing that, this Bas- Basin Water Quality Council will be, um, and I think your closest rep or the rep, or the person that you probably would be the most in contact is Barbara Noyes Pulling.
Oh, yeah.
With the Planting Commission. Um, and so, you know, she's one of those people that will be, um, prioritizing proposals, so municipalities are, are, um, able to propose and put in projects just as well as, you know, nature conservancy or watershed alliance groups, et cetera. Um, so the, it's been a long process, we're currently at the tail end of sorting, sort of putting in all the systems in place to do the prioritization review process, funding, et cetera. Sometime soon, um, probably midsummer, um, the RFP will go out so that people can st- actually start proposing these projects, so access to, like I said, pretty large funding pool is coming soon.
Okay.
Um, it, I, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have just from that, but if after the RFP comes out in the town or some group within the town, um, you know, like the dam project that you all, um, worked on up there, something like, if something like that has been kicking around or percolating around and there's questions about like, well, what's, you know, what, um, is this an appropriate project? You can reach out to us, you don't have to go through Rut- the Rutland RPC, um, or through Barbara, um, she just happens to be a representative within your region.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I don't know if there were questions, neither Mike or I knew what the context was for the conversation that, that happened with John, so.
Yeah.
But, but this Act seventy-six, you know, was passed, what, two years ago, and the funding's sort of been nebulous for two years now, and it's finally gonna come available.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is some of that money gonna be directed towards, uh, cities and municipalities on their water sewer that's dumping into the system, because that seems to be where a lot of the phosphorus is really coming from.
Yeah, so if it's, so it's.
Or is that a different?
These projects have to be non-regulatory, so that's, there's already, you know, regulations in place that say you can only output X amount now, non-regulatory, yeah, so however, if you, if there's a section of a creek or a river where you, the water testing has been done, identified high phosphorus, and for whatever reason, those, it's, you know, um, eroding banks, and you wanna, uh, restabilize, or you want to, um, improve buffers, those are definitely projects that would be funded through that, but this isn't gonna fund infrastructure for, you know, Rutland or West Rutland or anything like that, no, yeah. Yep, um, the, there's a fair bit of ARPA money, um, that some towns have chosen to use for infrastructure, like it's a stormwater and municipal water supply, yeah.
Is there a different amount of water or money allotted for these projects that I, I asked about?
Yeah, yep, yep, and, and the infrastructure bill that I think just passed, I think, I think that's true, the, the final, I think, well, they're out of, they're out of session now, so I, I'm speaking a little out of turn, but I think all the money that will be assigned to the various aspects of infrastructure in the state have all been settled on now, and there is money in there for some component of that, yeah. But the ARPA money is really where I think a lot of municipalities, you know, because it was a big chunk of change, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, great, anybody else have anything?
Thank you.
Okay, um, Brenda, I'll send you an email, or sorry, a, a URL that you can maybe put in minutes, that will point you directly to the Clean Water Service Provider page.
Oh, that would be awesome.
Oh, perfect, yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Well.
And that's with us, that's not the state, that's, you know, the Otter Creek Basin.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, thanks so much.
Thanks.
Have a good one.
Yep.
Okay, now I, I, I did happen to find, there is a bill in here to that Engineering Ventures, one of them is in here, from the work.
Which one?
Engineering Ventures, the.
Okay, that's Engineering Ventures?
Yeah, and it was from work done back in April.
Oh, but nothing from Otter Creek Engineering?
There is one for them for seventeen eighty.
Right.
That one is for water system study. And then there's another one for fifty-one twenty-one.
That's the one you questioned.
And that is also, it says water system study on it as well.
Yeah, I guess if you could just find out specifically what that was for, it'd be great to know, you know, not right now, but if you could.
Hydraulic modeling preliminary engineering.
Drill.
Must be something the water board did.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe, I don't know, I guess we, we find out, find out what, yeah, find out what that is.
I mean.
I will.
All right, so, but you said there's this other firm, there's a bill, we haven't seen the orders on that.
Engineering Venture is on here?
Oh, is it on there?
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Forty-two fifty?
Yeah, forty-two fifty eighty, yeah, that's on there. Yeah, and it said.
What is it again?
Fire Hill Bridge.
Oh, okay, that's right, I did see.
Yeah, forty.
Engineering Ventures.
Yeah.
Fire Hill Bridge.
Well, it's, yeah, originally it was gonna be Fire Hill.
Originally it was Fire Hill that you all were gonna put that culvert on.
Culvert.
It was supposed to be Fire Hill.
Isn't there a bridge on Fire Hill Road two that we're doing?
There is, there were two different proj- from what I can see from the.
Two different projects.
That's, the culvert had to do with the, the one that.
Yeah, but the Fire Hill Bridge is a different project.
Different project.
It is.
Yeah.
There's Fire Hill Bridge and then there's.
So that's what this, so this is actually Fire Hill Bridge.
Bridge culvert, because you had, i- it's, it's confusing, especially for me coming in, because you, they bid on two different culverts and then you didn't do the culverts, and then there was the bridge that did get done, I think.
I don't think it ever got done.
The bridge didn't get completed either?
I don't think so, no, because I don't think they could get the, wasn't that the one we couldn't get what we needed to do it, they couldn't get the cement in time?
Well, culvert, yeah, come in too expensive, we.
Well, the culvert deal, that was way too expensive.
That, yeah, that could be. Nine hundred thousand dollars or something, which is ridiculous.
That one's in, that's in storage.
That's in storage.
Right.
Yes, but I don't think that Fire Hill Bridge was ever done.
This was all for the engineer, the preliminary en- engineering one.
It's gotta be out, it's gotta be by Ed Ujares, right, it's the only thing I can think of.
I told it out.
The one just past Omea before you get to.
Do you wanna?
No.
No, it's on Fire Hill Road.
Still on Fire Hill.
Isn't there, by where Liz lives, isn't there a little bridge there, is that the one, I never knew where it was.
There's one there.
Where does it turn to Fire Hill Road?
No, it's Fire Hill.
Fire Hill is up on the top. Across, I'm, I'm ninety percent sure.
That's right, cause it's Whipple Hollow.
It, it's saying Pittsburgh Fire Hill Road Bridge.
Is there one out behind Liz's, you know, that like swampy area before you get to Teresa Forest?
There's gotta be.
There is, that.
Well, well, that's the one, but is there another one?
Crush Stone is the one that we couldn't put where the culvert is, we couldn't use that culvert, that's Crush Stone.
That was way too expensive, yeah, just past Crush Stone.
I'm just over.
But is there another one out there further, I don't know where that would be?
I'm not sure either.
I guess we'll have to check, John will probably tell us in a heartbeat.
I know, just call him up, sorry.
Just, he, he said you could email him, just fire him off an email, he'll clear that up for us, I think.
All right.
And Mike can make it easy on you, cause I'm sure he's well aware what that is. I'm sure that's.
I'm just trying to think, cause that's all up on that.
It's all up on that.
Side hill.
Yeah.
I mean, there's culverts, but I don't know of any bridges.
No, I can't.
There's no bridges that I'm aware of, it's, it's probably culvert they're referring to, but not a bridge.
Teresa Forest area, the, um, yeah, that's all I can think of.
Well, if you, i- in the, in the notes that I was able to find on the written bids, there are di- they were distinctly written differently.
Were they?
There was a bridge one, and then there was one for culvert, so, that much I can, I was able to determine.
Yeah.
Um, but I will reach out to him and get more detail for you.
All right.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
Cause the culvert one is the one by Crush Stone.
Yeah, just over the railroad track.
Bridge.
Right.
Well, I was having in my mind, the bridge was the one just past Omea.
Right, me too. I could ride that way and wheel.
Like a culvert though, too, really, no, it's not really a bridge.
Before you get to Teresa Forest, there's another little fork that comes across there.
Right, and that's.
That might be considered a bridge, but it seems like it's more, nothing more than a culvert.
It's more of a culvert, yeah.
I'm not sure, I think there's a little crossing.
That's the confusion perhaps.
Yeah, I think we need to figure out where it is.
What the definition is.
All right. All right, now let's, uh, we'll talk about the, uh, request for a thirty day extension, uh, for, uh, the assessment filing of grand list.
Sure, so there's a, a kinda like, not like, it's a one-page memo on it, um, I think the short story is that, with, per the state's rules, you have to request a thirty day extension. I was never entertaining using thirty days because that would mess up tac- the tax billing cycle, they have to get out tax bills thirty days before the first installment is due. So I really have to get Pittsburgh done in a similar timeline to West Rutland and Proctor, um, but the, I, I'm looking for a week, it basically, is what I'm proposing is a week, and I've talked to Helen and Pat about it, and and that's gonna be workable with, um, with their timeframe, where I would have grievances on the twenty-third of June, and then I have only, by statute, only seven calendar days after the last grievance hearing, hopefully there won't be that many, to turn those around and finalize it, so.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the thirtieth, you know, so within the month of June, I'm gonna wrap it all up, worst case, we get a lot of grievances, and I need to, you know, a few more days into July to do that, but that's still gonna be, you don't even get your tax rate until usually end of Ju- June, early July, you know, the ed- ed tax rate, so, um, I don't think it's gonna impact any other department, um, but I, I just wanted you all to, to know about it, it just gives Gail and I a little more time to, to wrap things up with, with that, and where the, the fourth is on a Saturday, that kinda pushes it, pushes it forward just a little bit even more, so.
Yeah.
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 All right, I mean, yeah, is that something we need to vote on or just consensus?
I think probably should vote on it, I'd make a motion that we extend.
The request has to come from the state.
Right, I'd make a motion that we extend the thirty day extension under Title thirty-two.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Make it legal.
So, while you guys are here and we're signing those, quick question. I've gotten a couple of calls on how small of an items are you going down to, cause I got people talking about calculators and, well, I haven't heard pencils, but, and rakes and shovels and.
I am thorough, I, when I go through whatever equipment they have that they're using, you know, I make a list of it, and, and I treat everyone the same, and you know, I, I'm not nickeling and diming though, but if, if they're, that's their tool that they're using, I'm including it.
Okay, all right, okay, yep.
But it's a fair question, and I, and I do it for everyone.
They've got separated somehow, John didn't sign.
Oh.
Rakes and, rakes and shovels?
Something's not right.
We do, and we group things like that, I mean, you know, some things are, they come and go, they're two to three years old, they replace them, so things like that, we work out a flat amount, because on April first of each year, you have a certain amount of those tools to operate, so for instance, landscapers, we group that, we don't, you know, make them break down five rakes and three shovels, and, no, we group it together, and, and that makes sense to people, because you're trying to give them back a list that they can work with going forward, so people get that, they don't understand that on April first, which is your new date, you have to have a certain amount of equipment just to perform that service, and people are, they get, they understand that. So even if you had a thousand dollars worth of stuff, it's six dollars a thousand, and people can work with that, yeah, that's in.
Kinda, kinda the nature of personal property, Mark, where it, it is somewhat, um, minor items, um, but it, in, in total, when you have some large companies, that's a big contribution to your municipal tax base. So, I mean, what we receive from Omea and a few other large companies, make it well worth doing personal property, um, I don't know why towns like West Rutland, that was voted out before I was back in town and involved in that, I, I never would've voted for that, we have an industrial park, we should still be doing. Um, I don't know why towns like West Rutland, that was voted out before I was back in town and involved in that, I, I never would've voted for that, we have an industrial park, we should still be doing personal property. Things like Comcast, what Gail is looking into with Comcast, what the state collects for that is quite honestly kind of a farce for what you know they have out there for inventory and what they're charging all of us for our Comcast service, which keeps, they keep building on, and yet their their assessed value goes down every year, and the way that works in other towns, you only get th- that on the education rate side. It's, it's exempted on the municipal side, which is kinda crazy, I don't know why that industry is that way, but Pittsburgh assesses all of it because we do personal property, and.
I think this is something brand new though, isn't it? We've never done this.
No, it's not new.
Done what?
I can remember when they, first April, they wanna know how many horses you own, workhorses, and how many cows, and how many heifers, and then.
Well, that was, that used to be in the Lister handbook, that was the job of being a Lister, you were counting tie stalls in a barn, and how many, how many tie stalls you had for cows.
That was the one.
That was the first handbook.
Yeah.
And they did away with that for, for many years, and.
Well, we shifted the fair market value.
This, this is kind of a, it's a comeback, is it? Am I, am I right, or no?
Well, what, well, it's not really a comeback, because there is a law on the books for this.
Yeah.
And all business personal property used in the conduct of the business is supposed to be reported.
Yeah.
So you have to, each business, you have to take some time with, 'cause this is a scratch job, no one has been
Doing it.
doing this and providing this to you, so what you've hired me to do is actually be that person to kinda go through each and every business with, with a blank piece of paper and try to explain to them what you need to count, what's okay to leave off, that doesn't make sense. I mean, there's things in there that people have, you know, it has nothing to do with the business, it's just stored there. So you have to go to, you know, put something together that makes sense for every single business owner, right? You have to do this fairly. And if people let you in, obviously you can go through it with everybody, they don't let you in, then I'm gonna go on what I know about those businesses, that's what you paid me for. Is to go in and actually perform this kind of job, and, and then I bring it back to all of you, and you make the decision about what you wanna do going forward. But it is time consuming, there's a lot of labor, there's a lot of questions, and you know, after I'm gone, there's more questions, people will call me up later, or email me, or they think of something, so I try to just keep it going, you know, try to answer all the questions I can as they come up.
Well, after the night, that'll be handled through the grievance process, 'cause they'll get an official notice, just like you do for real estate. But I'd just like to clarify, Joe, that we've always been doing this, Pittsburgh never ever voted out personal property. It's, when Gail says it's a scratch job, what is being done from scratch is to make sure we're collecting that information for all businesses that are required to pay that, that tax, it's been kind of an honor system, quite honestly, where a lot of people have been paying it faithfully all these years, and some people were not, they, you know, they may not have known, um, and the Listers may not have known, so that's what we're, we're paying Gail for, it's kind of, it's kind of ana- it's very analogous to the town that hasn't done a real estate townwide reappraisal for twenty years, and my dad and I have done those reappraisals, and you find, you find houses that weren't on the grand list, particularly in towns like, you know, that don't have any zoning. You find all kinds of structures that were never on the grand list, so it's making it, uh, on a fair basis, where you know, the people on Route Seven, we noticed if they built a new garage, but you might not notice somebody up on Fire Hill who's added a garage, you know, and, and technically they're supposed to have a permit in, in, uh, in Pittsburgh, so that that shouldn't slip through the cracks in, in any event, but this is a similar situation, I'm not picking on Fire Hill versus Route Seven, I'm just saying it's, it's evening evening the playing field and making, um, making the assessments equal.
Now, are you gonna be able to get through everybody before?
That's a good question. Because we've talked about that, I'm gonna keep going, and then we'll, we'll just do the best we can, get everything in that we have finished.
And just keep going, yeah.
You know, we talked about this, you can, uh, maybe, Lisa, you can bring that up, and you can sup- you can add people right up through December.
Right, well, you, maybe you can give them an update of, she, she, we have added quite a few accounts to the personal property, uh, database, so, um, so we're, those will all get a change of assessment notice, I think what we're saying is what might get extended is if after grievance, we, you know, we get information on a business that we, that we missed in that process, you have by law until, uh, December thirty-first to add that under errors and omissions, um, and, you know, we'd only do it probably if it was a, you know, a very obvious grievous error, otherwise we just deal with it next year, but, you know, we're, we're, I think we're gonna get most of them by, uh, for the June ninth deadline.
So June ninth, okay.
Yeah, so if we were to find one that filed, that we filed after Lister's grievance and after the close of that, we would have to bring that, I would have to bring that to you under errors and omissions to add that account, and they would go through the same process, where they'd get a change of assessment notice, they'd get the opportunity to grieve, so it's a lot better if we pick them up now, and they're all gonna get to go through the grievance process, they'll, they'll have, uh, due process to come and uh, talk to me, and obviously Gail as well, because she's the one who's done the work, so she'll be at Lister's grievances, and we hope not too many of them come forward to VCA beyond that, we'll see.
It's gotta be quite involving, if a farmer has a tractor and it's thirty years old, how, you know, what's it worth?
You're absolutely right.
Might be worth nothing, and might be worth
Well.
almost what it was when he bought it.
Well, agriculture was exempt.
Agricultural's exempt, yeah, agricultural's exempt.
It is exempt, yeah, yeah.
But your point's well taken.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But your point's well taken.
But, yeah, yeah, but you, but you're, you're, but you're, basically, you're looking, if people've got records, and you paid, say you paid ten grand for a tractor, even fifty years ago, and it's fully depreciated, you're ten percent of that ten grand correctly, so it's a thousand dollars, so you, you have, you have a number.
That's right, I wanted, I didn't wanna get into all of that, yes. Yeah. I, that's what you have to go out and look, so you know it's thirty years old, so that you're actually assessing them correctly. And that was the other thing that was so confusing to everyone, is those two methods, how do you depreciate things? And then there's, you know, it's complicated, because people are already buying things depreciated, fully, so then how do you handle that? And how do you make sure you're treating them same, so that everybody's equity, right? There's some equity there between everyone, depending on when they bought it, how they bought it, where they got it, and so this is a very time-consuming project, because every business has three or four pages of assets, and some of them have documents, and some people don't. So you're actually giving them an opinion of value based on those methods of depreciation, you know, to consider, and that's what takes so much time.
And I know you, you had also mentioned to me that you even go on, as far as to go online, and you'll research these
Oh, I do all the research.
pieces of equipment that you don't have data on, so that you're being fair.
Absolutely. You have to, there's so many different things, there's so many, you know, like the tractors, that, the longevity of a tractor, I could go on forever. I know all about farm halls, I mean, this is, I'm the, I'm the farm girl, I mean, I know a lot about it, and this is which, why you had me, you know, and I think that's why I'm here, so that I can give you this kind of information and provide this to all of your taxpayers here, okay?
Well, I can, can also apply, in our cases, well, it's omale equipment, and a lot of it is, I call it unextended life. It takes the place of a brand-new machine, but yet it's an old.
It is old.
You know, so.
Yeah.
How do you put a value on that? It's a big question mark, Karen.
Well, you, you, what did you pay for it? Fully depreciated ten percent of what you paid for it, Joe, it's, you know.
But, people, you know, at certain levels have really good accountants that I've been working with, and so.
Makes it a lot easier.
And, and we are finding out that some people are maybe reporting inaccurately, and it should be a little lower, and I know people don't like to hear that, but I'm being very honest. It is what it is, and you have to have some credibility with what you're doing, and so I make people aware, that if that's so that they're gonna report correctly next time, and not be overstated.
It's like a reappraisal, some will increase, some will decrease, some will remain about the same.
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Back to work.
Bye, have a good night.
Good night.
Alright.
Gonna spend some time to do all this throughout the whole town.
Um, alright, well, so it was already, uh, talked about that Pittsburgh Day is going to be at the rec this year. Get that off the list. Um, the Vtrans, uh, pre-construction meeting results.
Recording stopped.
Brenda, that's you.
Um, it, it, I think I included in the packet the information regarding that.
Yeah.
And, uh, so on the June sixth, uh, it's to begin, and then October uh, fourteenth, um, they're supposed to be finished with that stretch that goes into Brandon.
Alright, cool.
Yeah.
They're out on it today.
Yeah?
Oh, starting to pave, or?
No, just standing in the way of traffic and stuff.
Oh, well.
Same engineer that was lurking down here, so.
Lurking.
Yeah.
Um, alright, Ella, we got a review, the new annual police contract with, uh, Chittenden?
Yes, I met with, um, their contract administrator, Kim.
Yeah.
And we went over it, and I had to make a change based on the budget that they slated for that, those services. So I did the update and sent it to her, now that it's gonna go before their board.
Okay.
Um, it's not really much difference from prior years here.
Right.
I did increase the rate, um, a bit, um, I went two percent on the, the hourly rate, and then I also added in a, uh, twenty-dollar surcharge for fuel.
Okay.
Per officer's trip in.
Alright.
So that, those were like the big changes.
Alright, so now the Chittenden Select Board is gonna be.
They're gonna get that net, next, yeah.
Alright.
The inflation rate would probably be one consideration that you'd have to look at to adjust with, wouldn't you?
Yes, but then I also have to take into consideration what sort of increases have happened prior.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I can't like go in and assess a four percent or six percent, or something like that.
Well, yeah, and our, our police officers, their contract is set, so you know that's, they're going up that two percent every year, so, and that's the main other than vehicle replacement costs and fuel.
Right.
That's really the, the biggest expense is labor.
It's pretty much. Right.
So, yeah.
That's where that came from.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if disinflation that we're seeing is, affects insurance rates and all that, too, I have no idea.
Our insurance just went up for no reason.
Probably, in the long run.
Mine went down.
Oh.
Building insurance, building insurance has gone up substantially.
Oh, wow.
If you've gone in and redone for rebuild cost, and I don't know, we've been hit with anything in that area lately, when it comes to the town?
Oh, with materials and stuff?
No, town buildings on, uh, insurance rates.
I haven't seen that yet, I mean, I don't think it's time for that to come in yet.
Oh, yeah.
They're gonna be coming to do an appraisal within the next few weeks, so I would think if something was gonna change, that would happen.
I just did both my fire and car and house, and I shopped it and it dropped quite substantially, so you wanna shop your insurance.
Yeah.
You wanna shop it.
Four years, they say to go shop.
You, you all have the inspection coming though, from
Keep up with it.
The insurance company.
My house has increased it.
And walk all the buildings and all, so that's, and that's actually slated to happen within the next few weeks, we, we're notified.
Oh.
So I would think if something was gonna change, I'd probably hear about it right after.
Well, it'll happen after that, yeah, right.
Alright, and then, um, so the Nature Conservancy sent us a letter about the Smith Wheeler property.
Yeah.
Are they, they're gonna do a, have to do a management plan now, are they?
No.
I don't think, no, it's.
No, theirs.
My understanding is that the management plan that they were trying to get through, so some people wouldn't have to do any, uh.
Can you find the letter now?
It's down the bottom of the.
Was turned down, they, they wanted to set it to where, and that gentleman that was here mentioned it, that if it passed, but apparently it didn't, that some people could opt to not participate with the management program, and they'd still be in good graces with the peruse, but that didn't pass, from what I have been told.
Well, but that doesn't apply to these people, because they do what they want.
It appears that way.
So, yeah, I mean, I just, I find it bizarre that you're using housing money to take land out, the, the, granted, not much of that land could ever be built on, but again, it, it decreases the amount of acres that could ever be built on, okay, which raises the price of the other available land, and you take it out of virtually lumber production, which raises the price of lumber, and yet you're using housing money to do this. It's just
Not right.
No, it's bad.
Beyond unthinkable to me.
It costs the Conservancy fifty-eight hundred and thirty-six dollars to buy that four hundred and twelve acres.
I know, it's crazy.
All the rest of the money came out of the tax dollars.
Tax dollars, exactly. Which was set up for housing.
That's right.
To make housing affordable for people.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's wrong.
It's terribly wrong, and they'll probably sell it and flip it and do it again, that's what they've been doing, so.
So I guess this letter is just supposed to make us feel better, that they want to do some, some.
You know what you can do with that letter?
Logging.
We should put a sour face on it, just send it back.
I know. Oh, God. Alright, and then we, um, so, was there any highlights from that legislative results flyer that you, uh, saw at the, um, Senator meeting?
Well, it's, well, each of the items on there was their highlights to us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I, I just wanted you to, uh, know what I was exposed to and what I learned.
Oh, okay.
Um, that's pretty much was like informational for you folks.
Okay.
Um, they did mention that, um, one of the things that passed, and I think I mentioned it to a few of you, towns that have a population size of three thousand or less, um, the legislature, I guess with the Act Two-Fifty, have released, uh, lightened up some of those regulations, so towns that have a population size of less than three thousand, and you want to build housing, some of those restrictions that were previously in place may be laxed, and I don't know all the specifics.
I didn't hear about this.
But some of their, some of those rules were, were, um, lifted a little bit or lightened up.
Priority housing units, which means low income probably, under three thousand, S-two-three-four, under three thousand residents ease the Act Two-Fifty, I, I haven't even heard about this.
No, I haven't either.
So there's the highlight.
Okay.
I thought that was a good thing, really, I mean, at least it's, it's, uh, a step in the right direction, if you wanna consider doing something.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Yep.
Um, okay, and we have a right-of-way permit. Rich, looks like Chad was, Chad okayed it, so. Oh, I sure do, it's Outback Acres.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second it.
All in favor say aye.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
There might be discussion.
Sorry, any discussion.
Where is this right-of-way?
Oh, it's, um, uh, on, no, it's, um, um.
South of the Bushy property?
I always forget the name, um, Randall Park, it's gonna be Randall Park.
Randall Park.
Twenty feet
It's like right near my house.
South of the Bushy property.
I assume that it means.
Yeah, well, Tom Bushy lives on Randall Park, so it's gotta be, they must be just connecting out to their farm that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
It must be our road foreman's approval.
Yeah, he signed it.
Yeah.
Did you have any conditions?
Uh, no, no conditions, it's gonna, uh, be a fifteen-inch culvert, and water should not run into the roadway. Is there anything else? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
They don't have Townsour out in that neck of the woods, do they?
No.
No, it's too long.
Just on seven, just on seven.
If the sanatorium had connected on, that would've helped that area.
Well, the Police Academy would connect on, yes, yeah.
That may happen in the future.
I hope so, I'd like to be on, I'd like to be on Townsour, I don't know how old.
They may be back someday or.
I think they may be back sooner than we think. So.
Monkey around with us for years.
Alrighty.
That could cost the state some money, but.
Going back to old business, I think we can take that first one off.
Yep, they don't mean much to them up here.
Um, alright, the survey, uh, monkey link on potential uses for ARPA funds, have you looked to see what kind of responses we're getting, or is it still a lot of people maybe not knowing, or just saying no to everything?
I, I. Yeah, that's the general consensus.
Okay.
They're, they're saying yes to anything to do with, um, Yeah, that's the general consensus. They're, they're saying yes to anything to do with um, the park.
The rec?
The rec.
I'm used to, I, I know, well, I'm used to, well, I'm used to calling it a rec park or a recreation.
Smash car. Cause when I, cause I grew up in farms, okay?
Okay.
And, and the rec, you know, was built when I was still young.
Okay.
And everybody talked about the rec and so I'm talking about.
What rec?
What rec? Yeah, yeah. And it, it did, I mean, I guess I'm a little slower than some people, but it did take me a while to get through my head. But I still have this vision of a wrecked car when somebody says wreck, so. It just, if that helps, maybe not.
But for the most part, they're saying, you know, yay to the, to the um, board, to, to the new um, doc.
Doc, yeah.
And anything to do with that, but I think there may be a little gap in understanding that it's the ARPA funding and not tax. You know, tax dollars and maybe to just reiterate it, um, I might uh, get on there. Um, we've had a little bit of a time trying to get onto the website to do adjustments to the website. That's another thing I'm working on.
Okay.
Having more of us with the capability of going to our own website and making adjustments instead of sending them in in an email, which is what's been going on.
Yep.
So I'm trying to alleviate that. I'm trying to make things more. E- um, easily able to do things around here.
Gotcha.
Uh, it just seems like there were a lot of extra steps added in instead of just, I mean, I'm used to, if you wanna change your website, you. Someone, you have a person like that has been trained, you know, or can show you and then you get on there and do it. Cause that's what I like to do.
It needs to be updated, that's for sure.
Working on that.
I know, we should put that on our agenda for.
She needs to be on there. John's still on there. New board member needs to, new board member needs to be on there.
I know, we pay that guy regularly.
Yeah, so it should be updated.
So we should, we should put that in the next agenda.
I do, I think so too, because there's other things too going on with that, so that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Um, okay, and then, yeah. Alright, well then cannabis control board, um, we wanna further, we ta- we've talked about it a little bit, whether we want to form a Pittsburgh cannabis. Control board that would function like our, like as we already function as a liquor board. Do we wanna take any action on that? Is there any further thoughts?
Well, for now, for, as it stands right now, isn't it. Working and sufficient to, the select board review and. And kinda handle it, or, or does this need the creation of a whole new segment of people to oversee it?
We, we, what we need to do is, like, we have our liquor board.
Right.
We go over applications, which I think is important. This would be the same.
Same thing.
I, I personally think it's a good idea. I mean, I, you know.
Leave it with us for now?
Leave it with us, I think.
For the time being.
For the time being, I mean, yeah.
Prove to be more than. Regular business zoning, that's what it falls under.
Yeah.
So there's no other. Does everyone have one of these? Jeff gave me a copy of this.
No, I haven't had one.
Might, might be a bad thing to look through. Have you seen that yet?
It wouldn't surprise me, but if the state doesn't step in.
Maybe you could make copies, Brenda.
Mandates and regulations and.
Thank you.
And the town will have to.
Do you want it now? Keep it here till we find out if it's gonna be something more than what we wanna handle.
We can always get rid of it if we don't.
Absolutely, exactly. You might not wanna get rid of it too soon.
We should opt into it.
Yeah.
See how it goes, cause if it's no more involved than the liquor board, uh, it's, but I think it's important, you know.
Uh, I think it should be overseen to start with.
Yeah.
Well, it's gotta be overseen. Oh, yeah, definitely.
And by us.
Yeah.
Not by some state, yeah.
No, no.
I'm glad that you guys feel that way.
Yeah, by us, by all means. Well, I think so. Something like that, you wanna be darn careful, I think.
Starting out.
Yeah, exactly.
Keep an eye on it, yeah.
Yeah.
They'll step in eventually.
We get comfortable with it, then you might wanna hand it off maybe, but.
Yeah.
We can block them.
They usually know best up there, don't they?
They say so.
Well, they think they do.
They think they do.
Well, I'll tell you, it's gonna be all different next year by the sounds of things up there in Mount Pileer.
Oh, my god, how many, I know there's so many people that are not running.
The rats are running from the bell for you while the money, the money's there. Everyone's leaving now and it comes back to pay for it. It'll be another story.
All of a sudden, boy, the.
It's gonna be, it is gonna be interesting.
Thank you, the ship is sailing.
And it's gonna be both the House and the Senate too, with a few slots gonna be opening up.
I know.
Well, Butch's comment about the actual financial condition is pretty clear.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, well, yeah.
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 Now, do you all wanna wait for these packets and read through them and continue this discussion, or do we wanna just, it sounds like we're.
I think we leave it as a board for now, our, our board.
Okay.
So do we need a motion to create that board?
If you wanted to create a special board, like you have your liquor board, you'd have to make a motion to create a board.
Make a motion that we create a cannabis regulation board.
Consisting of the current select board.
Consisting of the current select board at this point in time, yeah.
I'll second that.
Alright, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great.
Keeps it here for the time being.
Print and all.
Yeah, that'll be cool, cause then it'll just be good for us to be able to read over for whatever this.
What it is we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
It don't work, we'll quit.
Well, yeah, we'll have to do something different, but I, I just think we need to, you know.
For the time being.
For the time being.
Alright, and then I guess just the, the Route seven bridge corridor, if you wanted to say anything about that.
Um, as far as the lawsuit that's going on or the.
Just whatever tack meeting update you had.
Um, there was that, but then there was also the mosquito.
Oh, shoot, that's right.
Did you folks wanna appoint someone from here?
Yeah, but I'm going in order, so the tack's next.
Wasn't that, wasn't the bridge supposed to be, that contract supposed to come up this year?
It's in environmental court right now.
It's not, it's the.
So it's kinda in limbo.
It doesn't have its Act two fifty permit.
No.
Right.
Tried to, they tried to do it without an Act two fifty permit.
Right.
And they got caught.
They got caught.
Really?
That's what they tried to do. They tried to go through this and Mister or Mrs. Conway noticed there was no permit and that's why this is here.
Good thing they're on that, this.
So you were there, I was there, Alicia was there, we all saw what went on. Um, basically the, that committee voted to uh, draft a letter. Supporting the town's position against changing the intersection.
Yep.
So that the slip lane, if you wanna call it that, may be able to stay hopefully.
That was the position of the town and the planning commissioner, I was involved with.
Yeah.
They had it in their mind that they were gonna.
They still do. And the state person threatened.
To delay.
Yeah, she threatened after the fact.
First time I've heard her say those same exact words.
Really wasn't very professional, I don't think.
She threatened to delay the project on an unsafe bridge.
Yep, till twenty twenty four, that was her final comments.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's really, I'll record this.
We did not respond.
Wow.
No.
We have to not do, even though a lot of the board members of the commission wanted to.
What do you say to that?
Uh, the bridge needs to be done. The intersection does not need to be done.
Exactly, I mean.
That's really what it comes down to.
Bridge isn't safe, replace the bridge.
And if, and if they wanna argue the intersection at another time, fine, but do the bridge.
That was a consensus, so. But the tack committee voted to back, it was a nine to two vote.
They, yeah, yeah. Um, they, they definitely, um, the majority definitely agreed that the, um. Town's concerns weren't being listened to, you know, just being completely disregarded, so.
Yep.
So that was, I was really happy to see that vote go through. And then, okay, I do remember seeing some emails about the current, one of the current board members wanted to s- step down to an alternate on the mosquito board. So we need, but nobody has, nobody's stepped forward that wants to fill that role.
No, and he said that because Pittsburgh has two spots, he would hate to see you lose one spot.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's a vote.
Okay.
Um, so you could elect to appoint somebody?
Yeah, we should probably advertise it in some way, see who's interested.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if I can do that, cause I'm not, I, I don't, don't I have to be a citizen of Pittsburgh?
No, I wouldn't think so.
I don't know. Actually, I don't know.
Is our representative?
Yeah, I, I don't know, but I think, I think the thing to do is, I mean. Uh, put, put it in, well, I don't know when the next newsletter goes out.
Not for a while.
Not for a while, yeah. Put it on the website.
Put it on, yeah.
Put a, maybe a, a notice on the door or whatever that you're looking for someone and see what we get in the next two weeks. And if we don't, uh, and maybe in the meantime, Brenda, why don't you see if you can serve?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that way, if, I mean, if we find somebody from the town who wants to be on there, that's ultimately the best thing.